April the 3rd. We will begin the meeting by inviting Pastor Joel Scott from Cairo Communities to come forth for the invocation following the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Council Member Thompson. We invite everyone to please stand for the opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Pastor.
Well, special thanks to Council Member Glover for the invitation, and I would have worn a Cardinals jersey or something had I known that the red was the theme. But I'm going to begin this morning just by thanking you all. We live in a great city with a lot of diversity, and as a Christian pastor, I'll be praying from that perspective, and so you feel free to join however you see fit. So, will you pray with me? Father Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth, set your kingdom in our midst. Lord Jesus Christ, Son of the living God, have mercy on me, a sinner. Holy Spirit, Breath of the living God, renew me and all the world. We open this time of planning and evaluation, and as we do so, we approach you, God, Father, Son, and Spirit. We recognize your uniqueness, Father Almighty, because you made everything, and the coming of your kingdom is the key to the flourishing of our community. We recognize your uniqueness, Lord Jesus Christ, because we are not perfect. We need forgiveness. By your death and resurrection, you opened the door for us to live within the Father's Kingdom. Holy Spirit, Breath of the living God, we recognize your uniqueness too. You bring life, you bring love, joy, peace, patience, faithfulness, and much, much more. These leaders here, our City Council, need all of that, so come. God, Father, Son, and Spirit, move in our midst, empower these leaders with wisdom, and enlarge their hearts, and do the same for us too. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Mr. Thompson, for getting our meeting off to a good start. Normally, the next item that we'd consider is the reading of the consent agenda, but obviously, we have a lot of people here that want to make their voices heard today, and we appreciate that. This is a nice change for us. We don't normally have this many people that want to speak today. I've been handed about fifteen cards, which unfortunately is too many that we can accommodate in this meeting. We normally set aside three allocations for three speakers. So I'm more than willing to bend the rules a little bit, and what we'll do is take five speakers, but we have obviously a large group here that I know wants to speak on the Falcon Field issue, and so I'm going to ask you to talk amongst yourselves and identify two people to come up and make your voices heard on that topic, because we have two other topics. There's voices, people here that want to talk about the bond debt amount in the city, and I've asked them to consolidate, and I think we're going to hear from Mr. Hawes on that topic. And there's also people here that want to talk about the private prison issue, and I'd ask those, I've got three cards from there, I'm just going to go with the top person, who is David Smith, unless you want to get together and designate somebody else to talk on that. So we're going to proceed with the reading of the consent agenda now, and that'll take ten or fifteen minutes. But after that, we'll go to items from citizens present, and again, if the Falcon Field folks would please designate two of you that you'd like to be the spokesman, we'd appreciate that. We're anxious to hear from you. And also, the private prison folks, if you want to designate somebody, thank you very much. Otherwise, I'm just going to go with Mr. Smith, whose name's at the top of this stack. Okay? Thank you very much. So proceeding forward, the next item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. I'd invite Mr. Kevin Christopher to come forward to read the consent agenda.
Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item two, approval of minutes previous meetings has written. Item three A, act on three-year term contract for LED relamping services for the Transportation Department. Item three B, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for self-contained breathing apparatus, air equipment, and repair parts for the Fire and Medical Department. Item three C, act on three-year term contract for tire deflation devices for the Police Department. Item three D, act on contract for purchase of five Ford Explorers, four replacements in one addition, for the Police Department. Item three E, act on contract to purchase replacement and spare programmable logic controllers and related components as requested by the Water Resources Department. Item three F, act on contract for fiber network expansion, Segment One, connecting the Communication Building at 161 East Sixth Place to Fire Station 211, 2130 North Horn. The project's funded by 2013 Authorized Public Safety Bonds. Item three G, act on contract for Phase One construction of Eagles Park, Broadway Road and Horn. This project's funded by the 2012 Authorized Park Bonds Neighborhood Stabilization Program and Community Development Block Grant Federal Housing Grants. Item three H, act on dollar limit increase to the term contract for custodial services for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department as requested by Facilities Maintenance. Item four A, act on resolution ordering the sale of City of Mesa General Obligation Bonds, Series 2017. Item four B, act on resolution ordering the sale of City of Mesa Utility Systems Revenue Bonds, Series 2017. Item five A, introduction of ordinance to authorizing a transaction privilege in the Use Tax Ambacy Program that'll be in effect from June 1st, 2017 to July 31st, 2017. The program will allow delinquent taxpayers to have certain civil penalties and interest liabilities abated. Item six A, act on ordinance regarding A-16-002, annexing land of the 8,800 through 8,900 blocks of East Main Street located south of Main Street and west of Ellsworth Road. This was initiated by the applicant. An item six B, act on ordinance regarding Z-17-001, the 1,600 through 2,000 blocks of North Ellsworth Road and the 9,200 block of East McKellips Road. This is located on the east side of Ellsworth, south of McKellips, a rezoned and site plan reviewed to allow development of a single-resident subdivision. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. I just noticed that the requests to speak by Mr. Hawes and those with him are actually not under Items from Citizens Present, but that it's on an agenda item, which was on the consent agenda, so I apologize. So we are going to accommodate, we will now take off from the consent agenda, Agenda Item three eight, I'm sorry, four, which is four A and four B. For separate consideration, we'll hear from Mr. Hawes or anyone else that wants to speak on that topic during that discussion. Thank you. I apologize for my earlier confusion. Is there a motion on a second on the, thank you, Mr. Luna made a motion on the consent agenda, which was seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. Thank you. The vote is unanimous in favor of passing the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is to consider Items four A and four B, which is various resolutions ordering the sale of bonds. Mr. Hawes, I'd invite you forward to come and share your thoughts on this agenda item.
Let me move this thing over. I don't, not sure what it is. Mayor, Council, appreciate the time, and I'm actually going to start with my closing comment as the beginning, because you'll cut me off before I get finished. I request that you delay all of the money issues that are on the agenda today for a minimum of six months and give greater consideration for what your actions will bring about to the citizens of Mesa. It appears that you will be taking an action at this meeting that will require the residents of Mesa to pay more interest because of bond sale and increase other operational costs. Do we really need to increase the operational cost at a time when money is so scarce? Why did the increase in the sales tax issue fail at the election last fall? Was it because it was a big movement to defeat it? No. There was a general feeling that governments are spending money that does not need to be expended. If these actions should tonight be understood by the citizens of Mesa, I believe that you would have a lot of, you'd have trouble, and you'd have a problem. I would guess that there's less than 1% of our citizens who realize that they are being burdened with more to carry. How does the city plan to pay for the additional bond interest and ultimately the bonds themselves? The interest will start as soon as the bonds are sold and add up each day. That interest will be on top of the over $100 million, I think it's about $125 million we pay each year now. How much could you do with 125 million? You would fund everything that you are wanting to fund now. Again, how will you pay for the additional costs? Do you have a printing press? No. Will you go to the federal government? I hope not. Will you go to the state? Probably not. Will you add a property tax? Yeah. Governments like this one. It gives them leverage. If you don't pay for your property tax, they come and take away your property. There's no relationship to the ability to pay within this one. Will you raise the utility rates? Probably, yes, probably, because there's little or no choice for, to obtain additional services from another source. What do you do for those on fixed income, who have no increase in income like you plan on having within the city, which is good? What happens if there is a dip in the economy? How about a big dip, which will surely come at some time? Yes, your actions are taken in open, publicized meetings, but then I ask the question, what has happened to the need for the police and fire departments? That was a big deal in the bond, or the sales tax issue, but yet that seems to die out and does not seem to be a priority for the city at this time, when there's still the need, and there needs to be cuts in other departments in order to cover their needs. Just because the cities around us are doing the same thing does not mean that Mesa should do the same thing, putting us in the poorhouse of financial debt.
Thank you, Mr. Hawes. That's your three minutes. We appreciate it.
Again, request that you delay actions on this for at least six months.
Thank you, Mr. Hawes. I do have some other cards on this item. Gene Defoe, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Mr. Defoe, for the record, we all know you, but if you would, please just give us your name and your address, please.
I'm Gene Defoe. I live at 510 East Ingram Street, Mesa, and I welcome this opportunity to speak with Why do we treat the repayment of general obligation bonds much better than revenue bonds that we levy on utilities? Lots of our priorities since 2012, when we play it past a large park and recreation bond issue, has changed. We have an increase in low-cost housing. We've had an increase in crime due to the light rail. We've had a greater emphasis on terrorism. We have a greater population growth now than we did in 2012, particularly in East Mesa, and we have a lower number of police officers today than we had in 2012. Are our fire stations in the right place? Should some of them be sold and relocated? Because I think that we need more fire protection, particularly in District Six. But to equalize things out, maybe we have too many fire districts in District One. Has our political climate really changed? I think so. Can we expect as much federal and state aid as we have gotten in the past? I'm doubtful. What are the political ramifications of our immigration situation? It looks like the federal government is cracking down on immigration from the South. What budget items can we really afford? And what should we give up? We no longer can pay for everything. We could sell some of our city assets, like the golf course, for example. We can lengthen the length of the life of automobiles before we turn them in for a new one. We could freeze the hiring. But we still need more public safety officers, police and fire, because of our increased demand for fire protection in the South area, particularly District Six. Can we freeze wages? I believe we could. But you are the gentleman that needs to weigh the various opportunities to cut the budget, and you are the people that we're depending upon.
Thank you, Mr. Defoe. I only had two, I think, thank you, sir, appreciate your input. I had two items, or two requests to speak on this agenda item. Are there any other requests to speak on this agenda item before we proceed? Okay. Open it up for discussion, Council. Any questions for staff or, Mr. Brady, I think we've been briefed on what this agenda item is. Just for those who might not know, it's the sale of two different types of bonds, general obligation bonds and City of Mesa Utility Revenue Bonds.
Mayor, may I just make one clarification, because I want to make sure that we have facts. The action the Council's taking today has nothing to do with the operational cost of paying for police and firemen. We still need police and firemen. These are capital projects, and they are funded by a secondary property tax, or the revenue bonds are funded by the utility rates. So on the secondary property tax, the good news is, we just talked about this downstairs, that because Mesa continues to grow and expand and becomes a place of choice for people to live, and values are increasing, we'll be actually seeing a tax rate decrease this year. The amount that we are paying on our debt is exactly the amount that we told voters when these items were voted on and approved by all the voters in Mesa, both the utility side as well as the general obligation side. So I think that we have gone to the voters, they have approved these projects, we're now just, each year, we don't sell them all at once, we sell them as the funds are needed. And in some cases, these are projects that are necessary for us to continue to attract significant development to the city. One of these projects is a water treatment plant that's allowing us to treat water from the Colorado River that the city has purchased, and it allows us to deliver water to such companies as Apple, who uses a lot of this. And so this has been a big economic development opportunity for the city. So they will pay a big portion of this through their water rates, and that's how these are paid for.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Council, any additional discussion or questions regarding this item? I do have one. I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I think that the, if I remember the authorization years from the voters was, I'm seeing 2012 and 13, and we're just following through with what the voters had already voted on before, because I know that infrastructure is critical for our city, and so, and you're only spending the amount of monies required for each of these projects. You're not asking for more than what's...
We can only spend the money that's been authorized by the voters, and that's all we're doing today. Each year, we only spend the amount, we only draw down the amount we need, and so that is what we're here to do, is just to sell the bonds that we need for the coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Brady, we're also, by only going out and selling those bonds on each project, that actually saves us money, the citizens' money, long-term on the finance piece and the interest rates, correct?
Yeah, unlike maybe someone with a mortgage where they have to incur all of the liability, the debt, the day they close on their home, we have the opportunity to only draw down each year what we need, so we save a lot of interest cost by only selling the bonds once each year, as opposed to doing it at the beginning of the authorization period. So that allows us to be very prudent and to assess the progress of construction projects, so we're only paying for what we need during that year.
Thank you. Any additional questions or discussions? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding Agenda Item four A. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Glover's made the motion for approval. Mr. Thompson had seconded that motion. Please cast your vote. Thank you, the vote is unanimous in favor of Agenda Item four A. I would entertain now a motion regarding Agenda Item four B. Thank you, Mr. Glover's made that motion, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your votes. Thank you, that passes unanimously as well. The next item on our agenda is, well, I should note that I, just a few moments ago, was handed some requests to speak on Agenda Item six B. Unfortunately, that was part of our consent agenda, so this item has already been approved for, so I wish we'd heard from you prior to the meeting, and we would have taken that off the consent agenda, but that didn't happen.
Your lawyer stated tonight...
Sir, this isn't, that you're inappropriate. Thank you, next time, come on time, and maybe you'll get the chance to speak. Well, then, you got to pass on the cards before the meeting starts. The next item on our agenda is items from citizens present, and as I indicated earlier, we have a lot of people here to speak, and we have a few different topics, so we're going to try to consolidate this a little bit. Have the folks from the private prisons perhaps gotten together and decided who they would like to speak on this topic? I have a request to speak from David Smith, Jay Getrich, and Martha McCoy. Looks like Martha, you got the short straw.
Hello, I'm Martha McCoy. I live at 5656 East Dodge Street in Mesa, which is not technically the city of Mesa. It's a county island. But I'm very concerned with Mesa affairs because I live here. It's come to my attention, and I'm by no means a professional or have any statistics on this issue, I just have a moral disagreement with the private prison industry in general. I believe that if, if the community or the justice system sees fit to incarcerate a person, that they should be, it should be, they should be held and taken care of by the government of facilities so that they can be completely accountable to the public. And that's my major objection. I have since learned that this was actually a transportation issue, that the cost of transporting prisoners from Mesa to the sheriff facilities in Phoenix was the actual problem that brought this on. We've just elected a new sheriff, Paul Penzone, and I think that it would be prudent to give Paul Penzone some time to work out some issues. If there are problems, I have no idea about transportation problems, but since there's a new sheriff in town, maybe we ought to give him a chance. Also, I'm worried about business creep with the private prison industry. They're asking for your business for transportation, but if we let them in the door, they could pitch you for juvenile detention and other services. I highly object to private juvenile detention, because there have been many communities in this country that have hired, or have done contracted private systems for that, and it's almost always ended up in widespread corruption between judges and the jailers to prop up profits, and I think that's just immoral. David Smith, who was originally asked to talk, did ask me to say that if you do vote for the private prison industry to take over some of your services, that the money that you save on those services should go back into the community for at-risk children. Or into the communities where, that are largely representative of the prisoners that you're transporting to the jails.
Thank you, Martha. That's all the time. I gave you a little additional time, because I know you're speaking for more than one person, but thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
That's an issue that's not on our agenda today, but we appreciate you being here.
Sure.
Thank you. So looking back on this, again, I'm anxious to accommodate the large crowd here, and I actually have three cards that have requested to speak, and we're going to deviate from the rules and go ahead and listen to hear from all three that have requested to speak. So first person I would invite forward is Mr. Billy Walker. Are you the best leadoff, Mr. Walker?
It's true of him to do that, isn't it?
Are you supposed to be cleanup or not?
I wonder if the...
Mr. Walker, please give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
I'm Billy Walker, and I fly airplanes, and this is an important event for all of us, and a few folks behind me that have a red shirt on, I think you're here to support the City Council's getting rid of the eviction notice that's been purveyed on the Wings of Flight Foundation. Why evict him? It makes no sense, and it contradicts what, and I'm sorry, I forgot to say, thank you for letting me speak, Mayor Giles and Vice Mayor Luna, and City Council members and fellow citizens. This makes no sense, and it contradicts what the city has emphasized since the early days of World War II. The Wings of Flight Foundation is nonprofit. They preserve, promote the rich aviation history at Falcon Field. The Churchill family has a long, rich aviation history. Dale and Brian, along with friends and family, have created a wondrous place that is a great benefit to Mesa. Theirs is a nonprofit act of love. For many years, the very hangar that the airport manager plans to evict Wolf from has been the place hosting countless community events. Here's some of the things that I've listed that I hope will remind you just of how important the Wolf Hangar and the Churchills are to this community. This venerable old hangar is where annual charitable Christmas party benefiting local homeless and children causes, memorial services, military airline pilot retirements, veteran celebration gatherings, which foster the rich history of Falcon Field. Wolf Hangar, planes and pilots were used in making the movie Patriot Skies. Hopefully, you've seen it, it's a good flick. But they picked the Wolf folks because the airplanes they use will help make the movie more realistic. Over the years, many of you have looked skyward from the Mesa Cemetery as the Wolf Aircraft, owned by volunteer pilots, honor the fallen British and US cadets and instructors lost during the intensive training of World War II. It's a very emotionally gripping scene when the number three Texan pulls up, turning west in the missing man tribute to the fallen. This mission is always done out of respect and at no charge. Other events such as flying veterans at no charge, the annual toy drive, education classes and seminars, Cub Scout, Boy Scouts, Explorer Scouts, aircraft rights for the public, aircraft restoration and maintenance, Wolf is open to the public at no charge.
Mr. Walker, you're over your three minutes, but if you could...
Am I given two or three?
You were given three minutes, but if you could...
And I've done that already?
Yeah.
I practiced this today.
I'm sorry.
Can I, can I give you one parting shot, Mr. Mayor, and I'll sit down?
Yes, you can.
Mr. Mayor and Council members, denigrating the use of that historic old hangar into a storage shed is far removed from the glorious way Wolf benefits the community. I hereby respectfully request you direct the airport manager to cancel Wolf's eviction notice, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The next card I have is... The next card I have is... Well, we're bending the rules tonight to try to get everybody in, but one of the rules is we don't clap. So I'm sorry, I don't mean to be a killjoy, but we just, we just don't...
Mayor, that's the only time that's ever going to happen.
I hope you enjoyed it, Mr. Walker. The next person is Chris Vandenberg. Chris?
Can we switch that? You'll go last, and I'll go second?
If you'd like, yes. Kurt Tingey? Oh, sure, Kurt, I recognize that, Kurt, welcome.
Hello, welcome.
Please, your name, your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Kurt Tingey, 2433 North Acacia Drive, District 1. I appreciate the chance to talk to you about the Wings of Flight Foundation, that's what Wolf stands for. It's a unique organization that I've known for some time, a lot through the Boy Scouts, who've, I've taken a lot through their organization there, and they've been willing to take the Boy Scouts up and have them earn merit badges by flying with them, in addition to the things that they said before, as the vets. It's more than just a hangar. Again, this is a World War II hangar, and that kind of plays into the whole benefit of this. If you go there, and I think a number of you have actually been to the hangar, there's a number of World War II airplanes in there, there's military vehicles, there's memorabilia, it's kind of a unique place, almost eclectic, if you will, but it, it's uniquely situated. It has access for the public to come in, and by moving it, or attempting to move it to someplace else, makes it difficult for the public to ever attend this, this location. I understand the, the city needs to progress, I understand the city needs to attract jobs and industry, and I want that to happen. I'm a businessman myself, and I like to see these things progress and change. The question is, how do we go about doing that? We have homes here in Mesa that are historical homes that we preserve, that we, we don't bulldoze and put apartment buildings there, to give us the community, the character of the community, to invite people out to Mesa. I think this deserves a similar type of protection by keeping the foundation there in its place. My understanding, the business that is looking to move into this is moving from a location in Mesa, within Mesa, and this is actually a smaller facility for it. And so I'm not sure it is expanding the business base in Mesa. I may be wrong on that, that's my, my information. The Wings of Flight Foundation has proposed to bring in a restoration facility, to restore old planes in the other half of the hangar. They currently have one half of the hangar right now, and if they could lease the other half, they would bring this business in. That could potentially be quite a bit of a changer for both bringing jobs, but also bringing tourism. Falcon Field is a unique location that has some unique planes in it. I must mention that you can see the, the amount of support this has. This is on a night when we've got the final of the Final Four. Very important. I suspect usually they get six minutes to talk, but tonight it's only three minutes because of that. There's a petition that's been circulated that has over 1,000 signatures, and I know that you know as public figures that 1,000 signatures mean there's probably tenfold that or twentyfold that of people out there who don't know about this that would be interested in it. And so I leave you with those thoughts, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kurt. The next card I have is Chris Vandenberg.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, my name is Chris Vandenberg. I'm actually from Belgium. Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a director at Wolf at the Wings of Flight Foundation. And actually, if I tell you that Falcon Field has a well-known history in pilot training, I'm probably not learning anything to anybody here, but I'd like to go back to a more recent past, 2007. I was actually the one who started Sabina Flight School on Falcon Field in 2007, and we did that in a very good relationship with the airport folks. Basically, they did what they said they would do, and we did what we said we would do. And I think we created a magnificent business over those 10 years, bringing jobs, sustainable jobs and investments from out of the country even to this city. Over those 10 years, I think it adds up to about a quarter billion dollar of foreign investment money that was poured into the Mesa community. Kurt explained the Wings of Flight Foundation activity, so I won't go into that anymore. But what I'd like to suggest is that we work together with the Falcon Field folks to create another business, and at the same time, preserve the history of the hangar. More importantly, start a warbird restoration business, expand into the other half, bring those jobs and investments that go with that restoration business, and as a result, optimize the use of the World War II hangars, which I understand needs to happen on the Falcon Field, but all while preserving their history in their original target. The hangars perfectly fit this mission, and it can be done. It has been done before, together with the people at Falcon Field. So what we would like to ask for is your support, your support to allow us to expand that business and preserve the history of those hangars, so that they become an asset for the Falcon Field, an asset for the Mesa community, and for the businesses that are around and on the Falcon Field. So I think in life, there's opportunities to keep history. Sometimes, very few people have the opportunity to make history. I think here, you, us, we have the opportunity to actually make history by keeping history. So I respectfully ask you to allow Wings of Flight Foundation to stay in the hangar and expand its business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vandenberg. Just a little point of information, this item is not on our agenda for any action tonight, and so by law, we can't engage in any discussion with you regarding this or entertain staff reports, but I know it's an issue that has been discussed at the staff level. I know Mr. Luna, our vice mayor, has been involved in this. Mr. Luna, anything you'd like to add?
Mayor, I would suggest that staff continue looking into this and perhaps have a community meeting, maybe within the next two weeks, to talk about this issue, dispel any rumors or anything, any misunderstandings, and hopefully we can have some kind of meeting really soon.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, thank you to everyone who was here to speak. I'm sorry we couldn't accommodate all of the requests to speak, but we have city council meetings every Thursday morning, and we would, I'd welcome you to come. They are also televised, so your access to, to get the word out is just as, just as prevalent there as in these meetings. So if you come Thursday morning, well, I certainly will entertain some items from citizens present there, and of course, every first and third Monday night, we have these meetings and would welcome you coming and taking the opportunity to speak there. And of course, you're, please feel free to contact council outside of formal meetings as well. That concludes the, all the agenda items for discussion today, is our motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned.